Hello, everybody. I'm Eden Weiselman, member of the League of Women Voters of Rochester. I would like to welcome you all here tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at later time. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners in this forum, the Rochester Post-Pulitum, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Public Library, and RCTC for their help. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level. We like to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor in this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters, the Rochester Post-Pulitum, and members of our audience. As there's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve your community, and for the enormous time and dedication and the commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. All candidates who filed for office were invited to this forum. At least two candidates for a given office must be present in order to hold the forum for that office. We've had a couple cancellations tonight which reduced the number of events we're holding because candidates were not going to be available. Tonight's forum will be in three segments. Each segment will last 45 or 50 minutes. We'll take a short break between segments. We're going to begin tonight with the Olmsted County Commissioner's District 7 seat. Candidates for this seat are Lenny Lawrence and Louis Ollie. Each candidate will have one minute to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters of Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the audience. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have one minute each to make a closing statement. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible so that we may cover as many questions as possible. We'd also like to tell you that you each got three 30-second rebuttal cards. You may rebut another candidate's statement on three occasions for three questions. You may not use two cards on one question, but you may rebut a rebuttal. You're simply restricted to one rebuttal per question and three total. I would like to remind the audience again to turn off your cellphones and any other electronic devices. Our timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters member Nancy McKenzie. Asking questions from the Post-Pulitum is Edie Rosefield. Again, I am Eden Weiselman. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will speak. And Mr. Lawrence will be speaking first. He drew number one. You're ready, Ed.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League, the Post-Pulitum, Chamber of Commerce, and most of all the people in the audience for coming out on a cold windy night in order to promote democracy. Born and raised in Olmsted County. Went to high school, John Marshall, did 12 years National Guard. Always had some sort of, I would say, calling to serve in some way or another. Just recently now, the last 12 years, I've been chair... excuse me, on the Cascade Town Board, chairman, the last 10 of the 12. And I believe it's time to move on and do something more, something more. And so often that some people, they get in a seat and they sit there too long. So I think it's time for me to move on from my township jobs and go to the county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
Thank you. I want to thank all the people, let me thank just to make a brief... I won't name each one, but I appreciate everyone coming to and participating in this. I want to let you know I'd be honored to serve as your next county commissioner for District 7. I'll tell you something about myself, too. I have been a resident of Olmsted County for pretty much most of the last 40 years. I've been married to my wife Judy, who is the current county commissioner for this district. We've been married for 25 years and have three children. We live in Cascade Township on the Zumbro River, and that reflects in our interest in the environment and in our water quality. I'm a small business owner. I've served on various boards of nonprofits, including Rochester Multi-Housing and Rochester Olmsted County Community Housing Partnership, which deals with counseling people in both... I'll stop just saying. But to sum it up, I would be glad to be your voice in the county and serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters will be offered three questions, followed by three questions from the Post-Pulitum, and then we'll take questions from the audience. First question from the League. How would you describe the current state of cooperation between city and county government, and do you see a need for a change? And we'll begin with Ms. Ollie.
Well, I think that the communication and cooperation with the county and the city can always be improved, and that can be done by efforts with people in both positions. We're talking people that serve in government and people that serve as departments in various county and city government. I don't think it's terrible. I think that it can be better, and I think it's going to be dependent on the efforts of people like myself and people I know in the city that are willing to work together and willing to improve our community by cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
I think relationships could be better. They're not horrible. They get along fairly well. One of the things is, I think you could do a better job, is in its attitude. I've always stressed whenever there's an issue coming from the rural side, when I was talking to my city counterparts, was the fact that the community didn't end at the city limits line. And we are all part of a bigger community. And with those kind of attitudes and working towards a common goal of serving the public, I think we can do great strides in doing more cooperation.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Lawrence. What measures would you support to protect the environment and the county?
There is a number of measures that are going on right now. One of the ones that I'm aware of anyway is the MS4, our Stormwater Management System, and how we're cleaning up the water that's entering our streets and... excuse me, coming from our streets and curbsides into the rivers. And I support that wholeheartedly. And it's made significant strides in the amount of turbidity and sediment that's entering into our even Silver Lake. So there's other issues that we can do out there, too, as far as being a more pedestrian family community, and how much that goes along with Olmsted County's efforts to put bike lanes and stuff like that on some of their roads that are going on out there. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
Yes, I believe that part of it is government effort, part of it is citizen effort, too. And I see the increase in citizen effort. And we can further increase that through... Part of our job as a company is to encourage and to educate our citizens in how to do Years ago, when I was at RCTC, we were one of the first people that started these bicycle lanes for people. And again, that's going to help our environment, but also help the health of our citizens, too. I have been a member of the Zumbro Watershed Partnership. The goal of that is to clean up our valuable resource, our watershed. And I would continue those efforts even in a greater fashion if elected to this position.
Any rebuttals?
Nope.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Mr. Lawrence. Delivering human services is assigned to counties in Minnesota. What changes, if any, would you propose to the way human services are delivered?
Health and human services in Olmsted County is over half the budget. It's... And it's probably going to get even more so as our aging population comes online. The Magic Act that's going on up to the Capitol right now, I think if that was allowed or passed here from the legislature this next session, that would allow a whole lot of things that Olmsted County could do on their own. They could be better prepared to have outcome-based scenarios versus what's dictated or demanded by the state. So I think that would be one huge way of going forward and being able to save some money and keeping our local control on those kind of issues rather than having one-size-fits-all package mandated from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
I'm not going to differ from that too much. The Magic Act is something proposed, but nothing passed yet. You know, the operating now, the Dillon Rule, that was formed because we had problems with local governments years ago. We're talking the last century of local corruption. And a way to limit local corruption is to mandate exactly what a local government does. Now, I think with the technology we have now and the openness we see in government, that is time to loosen that hold on local government, and the Magic Act will provide that. But once that starts, that's just the start of an experiment, and it's got to be carefully controlled and carefully regulated. These items will be able to deliver these social services in a more efficient manner. Thank you.
Any rebuttals?
No, no thanks.
Our next question will be offered first to Mr. Ollie, who will come from the Post-Pulitum.
The Olmsted County Waste and Energy Plant is experiencing a budget shortfall due to the decreasing volume of garbage coming into the facility. Do you think adding the third burner to the plant in 2010 was a wise decision? And what do you think the county could do to deal with the budget deficit since garbage volumes not expected to increase during the next several years?
Well, you know, part of government, you always have to plan ahead. You see a population increasing, and through all projections, if you look at Olmsted County, we are going to be the fastest-growing county in Minnesota, probably one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. The problem with the third burner is that we're getting people to do the right thing, which is more recycling. It will be... There'll be a little bit of rough times. We have to figure out a way to make this work economically. We can do some things with recycling where we can actually bring some income in, but that will be an investment also. And we can also try to attract other communities to bring their garbage to our third burner so we can make good use of it and produce that energy, and again, reduce our bottom line and have a sustainable efficiency and maybe beyond enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I... Was it a bad decision to build it? I don't think so. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a crystal ball and we could predict this downturn in waste coming through the plant? I look at it as an opportunity to make the other two burners last longer. We may not have an... We may have enough front cost on our investment, you know, that we're going to have to pay down a little quicker than what they thought they were going to because of the lack of revenue coming in from the dip fees. But instead of... I'm not sure what the life expectancy is on them, but anytime you're only using them a third less, if you're cycling them through, we're going to get probably 30% longer on the life of those burners. But I think it's a great problem to have. You know, that just means everybody's doing their job, and we're getting stuff recycled, and it's not going through the incinerator. And even with the fact that they're reclaiming a lot of the landfill waste that's out there right now that was bypassed earlier. So I think it was the right thing to do. I think it's only going to be beneficial to us for the future, and we'll have the extra capacity in case somebody else needs it.
Thank you. Our next question from the Post-Pulitum will begin with Mr. Lawrence.
What is your view on the future of silica sand mining in the region and how it might impact Olmsted County and surrounding counties?
Silica sand mining, and I had this question posed to me another way earlier on last week, but it can be done, I believe, if it's done wisely, if it's done with the people and the public protections put in place. There's a plan for the closure, and there's a plan to deal with the transportation of it. Our impacts on Olmsted County currently, they've passed... I believe the county board's already passed an ordinance in order to protect our roadways from the source until it leaves the county. And there's going to have to be a negotiated permit in order to bring those materials out onto the road. So our roads are going to be safe. The only thing I worry about is that we need to be doing it in a manner that's safe for the public also. And we need to figure out a plan to close these things when they're done so they're not eyesores on this landscape forever and ever. There's some unique ways of doing that, building houses around them or whatever, but...
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
Yeah, as far as silica sand goes, I think we need to look at it and make the most beneficial use for ourselves. It's going to happen, there's going to be a demand for oil until there's not a demand for oil. You know what I mean? I drove here tonight, and I don't know if anyone else did, too, but so I use that substance in that everybody wants that as deep as possible. So there's going to be pressure for these things to be done. I think we have to put pressure back to do it the most intelligent way possible and put some money in our coffers, too, so that we can protect our environment, make sure that when these mines are finished, that they are in a shape that's not going to affect us negatively for years to come. That's it.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
No, no thanks.
Very kind and gentle forum tonight. Our third question... Our next question from the Post-Pulitum will begin with Mr. Lawrence.
What do you think is the most pressing issue within your district, and how should the county board address that issue?
Overall, there's actually two, but overall, the one that I hear from across the whole district is property taxes and how these shifts that I think are happening are coming from the state, they're putting more and more of a tax burden on our local community. And Lou and I were talking just as we sat down, those shifts that were used to... Those burdens that are coming from the state used to be funded by income tax, and now they're being shifted from the income tax portion of it to a property tax portion of it. And that affects seniors and people on fixed incomes far more than it does anybody that's on income tax. The second issue that's out there is how we're going to deal with water, clean water. If you get on the northern part of the district out there, you got Lake Shady that's going on, those people are pretty passionate, like Zumbro Association is out there, they're pretty passionate on how they were going to get that lake dredged and cleaned up. So I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
Well, I've been involved in the lake for probably the last eight or nine years, and that is, I think, the most passionate issue out there because it's a resource, not for just the people that live on the lake, but for everyone around here. When... I was born in Minnesota, and my father worked for Allstate, traveled around, and I came back here as a teenager. We came back to one of the few counties in the state, you know, we had 10,000 lakes, we got no natural lake. So... But we do have Lake Zumbro, and that's a pretty good deal. But we need to protect that. It serves more than just one purpose, not just... It's a recreational purpose. It's people's homes. It's beauty, and we generate power. We generate power in a non-polluting way there, too, so that's important. But also, we'll say that economic development's important, and if we keep a handle on property taxes, we're going to be able to make everyone's life better economically.
Thank you. Any rebutts?
No.
Our next question from the audience will begin with Mr. Ollie. What particular partnerships between the city and county have been, in your opinion, a success? Why do you believe this is true, and what other partnerships would you promote?
Well, you know, there's been some partnerships with road maintenance and, you know, emergency services in the past, and I think that we need to promote cooperation in those areas. Again, you always got to collaborate when you're dealing with roads, bridges, and infrastructure when those are shared in many, many areas or when they intersect. I'd encourage it in that area, just about any area we can if we can cooperate with the city. And I know when you're not in office, everyone says that, "Well, I'm going to find a way to cooperate with the city," and the city people say that, too. But I think it's worth the effort. I have experience of growing up with 13 brothers and sisters. I know the importance of cooperation, and if... You know what? It's a matter of how you look at life, and I try to feel the people's soul.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, there's a number of different things out there, and there's committees and things that they're working with. Now, I think number one, when I see cooperation, I think of ROK, Rochester Area Council of Governments, and huge diversity of members in that group. School districts and city administrators from all over the county and the city of Rochester, and coming for a common goal, and that common goal is transportation. And without the transportation, we can't get farm market, get commodities to market, we can't get people to town, get them to their jobs and work. I think that's... That part of it's working well. There are other areas that they do work together also, you know. I know firsthand with road maintenance stuff where the city owns certain pieces of equipment, and the county owns certain pieces of equipment, and the state of Minnesota owns certain pieces of equipment in order to initiate one project. And a lot of it has to do with seal coating in that particular issue. There are places, but there's a lot more places where we can find common ground to do that.
Thank you. Another question from the audience. Rochester's growing fast despite the current economic environment nationwide. What problems will Olmsted County face with the growing population, and how do you propose to deal with these? We'll begin with Mr. Lawrence.
The growing population, we're going to need, again, more homes. We're going to need probably more streets and all of these things. What we're really blessed with in this area, though, is a pretty good planning department that foresees a lot of that stuff that happens. They project these things. There's developments on the table that are ready to go. So I don't foresee there'll be much problems. We had some problems earlier on with growth stuff, you know, and annexation issues and that kind of thing, but a lot of that's kind of played itself out, and there seems to be a pretty much a pretty large reserve of annexed lands already in the city. So I think we're pretty poised for a growth spurt.
Thank you, Mr. Ollie.
Could be the question again, I'm sorry.
Rochester's growing fast despite the current economic environment nationwide. What problems will Olmsted County face with the growing population? How do you propose to deal with that?
Well, with the growing population, you're going to have a growing need for social services also. That just sort of goes hand in hand, along with growing need for maintenance and infrastructure. I propose that, you know, through IT development, we can streamline a lot of our processes in both infrastructure and in social services. I think that's the... The key issue is that, you know, the Magic Act would also come into play here, and that if we have some flexibility, innovation, and delivery, those needs for people, that we can do it more efficiently and reduce the problems we could potentially have.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience involves the Department of Victim Services. Victim services have had significant cuts. Can you address the problem of funding that service? I will begin with Mr. Ollie.
Well, you know, anytime you're a victim of crime, that's a tragedy, you need support, and you need to... You know, society through government needs to help people become holy, and that's what happens. If anyone's been a victim of crime, they know what that means. There's pain, there's suffering, there's a loss of your life and how you live it. Now, there can be some collaboration with nonprofits and that type of thing, too, that could close the gap. With budget problems, we're only going to go so far. But I don't think it's something we can let just slip away to nothing, because it's important that we establish and keep justice and pardon justice is supporting the victims of crime also.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm going to just chime right in on what Lou said there. That's a very important part of what happens. We have to make people feel like they belong again after these crimes have been committed to them. And the money out there, whether... And I'm not sure. I'm not there. I don't know what, how it was cut, or why it was cut, or what's missing, or how it can be restored. But one of the things that I do think we need to do in our community is go to the nonprofits more with some of this stuff, look for outreach, and supply what the county can do best with educated personnel, with programs in place, and rely on the nonprofits in the community than to help pick up the outreach portion of that.
Thank you. Our next question is going to be given with Mr. Lawrence. This question involves private-public partnerships. Successful communities have reduced spending. I've done it by involving competition with private businesses to do public services. Do you have a proposal to include competition for county projects or services?
I don't have any proposals for that, but I have done... Been involved with some things that were public, and we've made them private, put them with different things, having to do with TCPA, having to do with our own billing inspectors and stuff like that. I don't have anything specific that would move a public-private one. We have one that's out there, the Zumbro Watershed Partnership Group, I think is what it is. And that's a private group that's doing public work on our behalf, so I would encourage those. I was a little skeptical at first with them, but the more I learn about them, the more I think their heart's in the right place.
Thank you. Mr. Ollie?
Well, you know, the question is, can nonprofits come and take a situation like our watershed and work to make it better? They apply for grants and raise funds in different ways to do that, and that's fine. I support that completely. I've been involved in a lot of nonprofits, as I mentioned earlier, and they do cut down on the cost of social services by providing those through nonprofits. on the cost of social services by providing those through nonprofits. But if we're talking about, if we're talking about making a competition saying, okay, let's privatize jails or let's privatize the law enforcement, things like that, I, I'm not in favor of that. I don't think that works out very well, especially for human beings.
Thank you.
I might just comment on top of that. Absolutely, you know, the public service, public safety and needs to be kept as, as, as public safety, not be privatized. I agree.
All right, thank you. Our next audience question involves a senior center. Since social services is the purview of the county, why does the county not provide the funding for a senior center rather than leaving that to the city? And would you support taking that on? And we're going to begin with Mr. Morris. And I suppose to the high, please.
Would, I think there's, there's a place for, maybe where the county can do something there. I'm not sure what it is. I, I'm not aware of, of the relationship between the county and the senior center as it is right now. But I would be more than glad to take a look at, to see if there was anything that, different things that we could help doing during, while we were there, Lou and I were at a forum there earlier last week and we were talking about transportation, you know, and I think where the county can do a good job is setting up those kind of discussions as to what, how we can think outside of the box in order to help for transportation. And one of the things we kicked around that day is maybe school bus schedules need to be looked at. Most of the time, when they're going by my house, there's only one or two people on them. So, but was, is there room or capacity for more people to travel that way? I think so, but how do you start those conversations?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Olden.
I have had a personal involvement with Senior Citizens Center for the past eight or nine years. I'm at a local service club that raises funds for them. So there's a lot of ways that they raise money, the city's involvement courses, you know, the building that they're in. The county does give senior citizens some money, not a lot. Could there be more of a collaboration? Sure, but if we're going to have a budget and take money from one place to another, that's something we have to look at very carefully. We are going to all be seniors sooner or later. So if we have a, if we can look in the future and set up a FRA's where we're serving the seniors more directly, put a place like that, I think that's, that's something important to look at. But committing a dollar figure right now, I, I wouldn't do that without some further investigation. But I do certainly support them and have in my private life, so.
Thank you. Our next question involves state mandates. How should the county deal with state mandates that are state mandated but unfunded services? We'll begin with Mr. Olden.
Well, that would be something I hope that we have some flexibility if the magic act does pass, that we can look at eliminating some of those unfunded mandates. If, if there's not money for, for that, then why should the counties be burdened with doing something without any funds to do so? I think we have to look at all, all those unfunded mandates and see the priority or even necessity of those items. We do have to be careful with how we're serving our constituents, but I, I'm thinking that some of those can be eliminated with the right kind of legislation and all for that.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Unfunded mandates from the state, that, that's a huge thing for me. And like I said earlier, all that it remounts to is, is a shift in taxes from, from income tax to, to, to local property tax stuff. And with people on, on fixed incomes and they're sitting there wondering how they're going to pay their property taxes every year because they keep going up because of the mandate stuffs that, that are coming down from the state. I don't know how to, how to do that except for push back and do a better job of, of maybe letting our constituents know that when these things come to us, you know what it is going to mean to them specifically as a property tax increase to our local residents. And maybe then they can help us push back with, with the state in order to find another source of, of getting these things funded. More often than not, when these, when these mandates come down, they're, they're not frivolous, there, there are reasons we need to do these for our people, but how do we, how do we fund them? You know, that's, that's the big problem. If we do it locally, you got to make winners and losers.
Thank you. Our next question will offer up to Mr. Morris first. What are your priorities for the use of emergency preparedness dollars?
I suspect you're talking about our, having to deal with storm management and, and these types of things. I would like to see us partner more on one of those areas that we should be partnering more with the city. I think that, that's a very important area that we should be doing that with. I, I know that, that the county has, has built a facility now, a command center and to move a lot of stuff down in there and, and they're pretty well set up. And I think the city has also done, done the same thing. I, I think those dollars should be, should be spent somehow, how we're going to use it to cooperate between the two of them and build that bond back again that like we had earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Olden.
Well, I think that's something that, that when you take a look at and something that we need to get citizens' input to if we're going to collaborate more with those emergency management funds. After all, it's, it's to benefit everybody in the, in the county and the area. And something we need to take a look at, and I think it's a little more complicated than, than I can give a simple answer to right now, but it's something I'm definitely look at and, and research and see if there are ways that we can better use money, more efficient way of using money is always something that's of interest to me.
Thank you. Our next question begins with Mr. Olden. In the past, requests for variances in zoning ordinances have routinely been granted in the county. Do you think this practice should continue?
Are we talking about variances for how a property is used, variances how, where to put a driveway, variances...
I would say how an area, how a property is zoned.
How a property is zoned. Well, we, we like to protect people's individual rights, so I, I would look at everything carefully. I don't think you can give a simple answer to say, let's have no more variances. That just makes winners all the people that got the variances and the people that don't have that doing in the future would, would feel like there's some unfair advantage. I, I think the variance serves a, a good purpose, you know, like a safety purpose of a property. That would be something that you always have to look at. If somebody's going to want to change zoning and upset all their neighbors, I think that has to be looked at carefully too, because we have to protect all our neighbors' rights. People buy property in certain areas because of what it is at that time they buy it. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, variances, and I've been involved in, with a couple of them, and they're, then they run the gamut of what they're, what they're there to do for. And, and basically it's, if you're finding that you're granting variances to one or two particular things over and over again, then maybe your ordinance is bad. Maybe you need to change the ordinance. But variances is there in order to allow some latitude that a property owner can enjoy his property like his neighbor can. There may be an issue with having to deal with landscaping, there may be an issue dealing with top, uh, topography or something like that that makes it unique to his particular situation. So you want, you want to make sure that, that there's an option out there in order to help those people get what they need off, off of their property. But if you're finding you're, you're doing it over and over for a driveway that's too close to the stop sign or whatever, when it might be, then maybe you need to look at your ordinance, so.
All right, thank you. That concludes the questions portion of our forum tonight. We will now hear closing statements from each candidate. Candidates, you will have one minute to speak and Mr. Olden will go first.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, the room of voters, post poll agent, and thanks for all the kind and generous audience. Trying to pander for clapping at the end. Sorry. But you know, this is a big election year. We've got presidential election, we've got all our state and local and federal elections too. On top of that, we have two constitutional ballots, decisions. So that kind of creates a problem. Lenny and I were talking earlier, we talked about this a couple of times about, we feel like nobody's paying that much attention to our race. Not to, I guess have to be the pride to be here, but anyway, we're glad you came out and encourage all your friends to be, participate, no matter who you want to vote for. Participate, please. I would love to be your representative for District Seven. I would like to be the voice of the people. If you give me that position, I will not let you go and I will win as hard as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Yeah, I want to thank you everybody again for coming out here tonight and, and listening to us two guys talk here. It's been an absolute pleasure for me to run in this race. I've, I've met people that I haven't met ever. I've, I've found people that I haven't seen in 30 years out there knocking on doors and I've just been having a blast doing that. But again, I encourage everyone to get out and exercise their right to vote and I, I would sure like to have your vote on November 6th for County Commissioner in District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree that it is, it is the, the city and county offices that probably affect our lives most directly from day to day and get the least attention. So we do appreciate you coming out and being informed.